Following a reminder to meeting attendees, this is a formal meeting of a council. And I can advise that members of the public will be given an opportunity to speak during public open session, but not at other times. The meeting is being filmed and by being present, attendees are deemed to have agreed to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings. I can advise that attendees should not disclose any personal information of individuals, as this would infringe the data protection rights of that individual. And may I please ask everyone to mute their microphones when not speaking? Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. We've got a few this evening. Let councillor Fage sit down in the public gallery. We've got apologies from councillor Knight, councillor North, councillor Patel, councillor Russell, councillor Skilton and councillor Gwiltshire. Okay. Item number two, declarations of interest. A, any pecuniary interests this evening? No. Or B, non pecuniary interests at all? Nope. Okay. Okay, moving on to item three, town mayor's announcements. I've got a few things to mention this evening. It's not an exhaustive list by any means, but just to give colleagues a bit of an update. We had the, recently we had the mayor's charity quiz for Magpass and Biggleswade Good Neighbours. And I think we raised about, around about £700. I haven't got an exact figure just yet, but I think we did about £700 on the evening, which is a great, great figure actually for the quiz night. So I was really pleased about that. I was very happy later on that week to unveil one of the, or sorry, the first plaque in conjunction with the Biggleswade History Society. There are a number of the green plaques are going around locations around town. The first one being outside Surfing, which is for the Market House building. There's another outside George's Hall, one outside the old police station, which is the Seacadets building and a few others. So do have a wander around town and try and see those. I think it sort of brightens, brightens a place up and also refreshes some of our excellent local history. So it was great to do that. I attended the St Andrews Church Country Fair as well, on the same day as the History Society plaque. And also I attended the High Sheriff's Service in Bedford, the legal service with the High Sheriff of Bedfordshire. And I'm very much hoping that the High Sheriff this year is able to come to Biggleswade to do some, do some work with us, whether that's in a fundraising capacity or some sort of awareness raising issues. So that was very good. I also attended with a number of other colleagues last week. Tritax Symmetry up in the Business Park or Symmetry Park, I think, to be specific, the phase three launch. And it was good to see councillor Russell and councillor Albone and councillor Thomas there as well to speak with Tritax and others about their work in Biggleswade and also about some of the new developments, including Warburtons that are going to be coming on stream fairly soon as well. I also attended the, or we'll be very briefly, but I attended the Ivor Valley College. So this is the post 16 group at Ivor to help award their Bronze Duke of Edinburgh awards. And it's amazing they're able to do the D of E award with them. They're about 10 students altogether, I think. And it was great to see, meet the parents and also meet some of the college staff as well on site. And also very finally, I was able to welcome or welcome back Mr Ben Newman, aka Spudman, to Biggleswade, who served about 3,000 people, I think it was, the other Saturday. And he obviously created quite a lot of footfall and interest in the, in the town. A lot on social media, a lot on BBC, Beds, Hearts and Books and elsewhere. So I think that was, from his perspective, was a very successful event. And it was good to see the town council able to support that through the public realm, realm team and generate some goodwill in the town. And then the last two points I've got is, I just want to say also a thanks to our deputy mayor, David Albone, for chairing the social enterprise meeting we had last week. There are a number of attendees, including Amplius Housing Association, Preen and Wenter, which is sort of Economic Development Group. And I think there's going to be a follow up meeting from that meeting as well. It went quite well to try and harness some of the local social enterprise groups within town as well. And then the very final announcement I've got is, I'm sure you've all got it in your diaries, but we do have Remembrance Sunday coming up very soon, which is the 9th of November, Sunday, the 9th of November. And I'm pleased to say we've got the Lord Lieutenant of Bedfordshire, Susan Disarda, at the parade with us on that Sunday as well. So she's very, very happy to come along to that and support us in that event as well. So yeah, lots, lots going on there at the moment, a busy time. And I will keep you updated as I do lots of other things. Okay, so number four, public open session. Councillor Fage.
Hello. Just two quick things on 13A and 13B. So 13A is this stopping up of a bridal way, which I must confess, I had not seen because it's not in my ward, so I'm not consulted on it. Normally I think this is an item for consideration. So I think the town council is actually being consulted on this. You certainly have the opportunity to provide representations. I'm looking at this for the first time. I have to say, I'm a little bit concerned about the removal of a bridal way. I know that's a bit of a dusty path across a field, but the point of principle of not losing public rights of way or downgrading public rights of way is something that the town council has been very focused on for many years. So I'd, I'd hope members would give that quite a bit of consideration and challenge because we really would not want to set a precedent where it's okay to get rid of bridal ways. That's just the first thing. The second thing is item 13B, which is, I just want to correct something on the agenda, which is hot off the press, the ongoing consultation about Ivor Valley School. I think it's been paused as of today. So whether or not that will be on the agenda at the next meeting, I don't know. But I do know when it does come back for consultation, it's really important that members consider it in detail. Thanks.
Okay, thank you councillor Fage. I think we'll, we'll take 13A as you've described. On B, absolutely will, we'll keep it on the agenda for the next meeting unless information changes in the meantime. But I know what members are very keen to put their views forward on, I think, the way we think, you know, the future of Ivor Valley should be. So we'll keep it for November, but unless the information changes, which I'm sure you'll make us aware of, then we'll, we'll move it. But thank you for flagging that with us. Okay. Number five, we don't have an invite to speak this evening. Unfortunately, John Tizzard, the Police and Crime Commissioner couldn't be with us, but we're hoping, I think he can come to our December meeting now instead. So I think just hold on to your questions for him until December. Okay, number six, members' questions. Okay, no, good. Okay, so number seven, straight into minutes and recommendations firstly of the town council meeting on the 9th of September. So I'll do them page by page and we'll just do the accuracy first. Number nine. Number 10. Number 11. Number 12. Number 13. And number 14. Good. We all agree that they're, yeah, okay, move it. Great, thank you. And, and then now to note, well, they are there to note the F and GP minutes. I don't think we need to add anything, they're there to note, to note. Okay, so number eight, so items, sorry, matters arising from the ninth meeting, ninth of September meeting. So I'll do it again, page by page. Page nine. Page 10. Councillor Strong.
Has there been any response to the clerk's letter to Central Bedfordshire Council, NP, et cetera, on Bond's Lane?
Go on, yeah. Yeah, I'm just on that councillor Russell contacted me directly and asked if I could raise that on her behalf, but councillor Strong's got, so I would, yeah, councillor Russell's asked me to.
The short answer to the question is no. But I think myself and the mayor and the deputy mayor have been in consultation about what the alternatives might be.
We have, we have, we have, we have. Go on, Karim, yeah, if you want to add anything.
Thanks for sharing, just briefly, a couple of points on Bond's Lane. So we wrote to Environmental Health Services as well, separately from the clerk's letter as well, just to follow up. They've confirmed that they are aware the area is an issue. They've been educating, quote, businesses around, you know, disposal of, responsible disposal of waste. When we went back and pressed saying what's happening with the current clear up, no response of saying they're aware and that they're looking into it. That's all they've said so far. This is over a week ago. Secondly, we bumped into literally last week, the PCSO, who said historically there's been a long issue with that. And her view was that something needs to be done as well, along the lines that you've outlined. But that's, that's it. Okay.
What, sorry. Yeah, councillor Fage, I know it's probably unusual to ask members if publicly essentially, but as a ward councillor, I just, have you got any further information on this? Because I know you've been working on this as well. And then I'll bring other, other members into the room.
Alongside the town council and two other ward councillors. If anyone needs a light bulb changed, I'm sure we can do that as well. So my understanding is it is now going to be cleared. It has been complicated because some of the waste is somewhat historic, going back several years, not associated with the current businesses that are there. Some perhaps left by businesses that had a certain amount of turnover in some of those units that have vacated. Some potentially attributed to businesses that are still there. I don't know the full detail on it. And so my understanding is they do now have a path to get this cleared and it's with environmental services at Central Beds. I can chase for a timeline on that and share back with the clerk. Just one thing that I am following up on, one thing that was very concerning really was that the fix my street entry, which is how you report fly tipping, this, we did this back in November and it was closed in February because it became aged and, and wasn't investigated. So my understanding is that one of the group leaders has followed up with the chief executive about why some of these fix my street items are being closed without being either investigated or closed or given timelines. So watch this space on some of that.
Okay, thank you councillor Fage for a helpful update. Councillor Strong.
Yes, if I may, it does concern me, the lack of approach from Central Beds to council to clearing this up. It's a health hazard. It's part of their statutory duties, I think, possibly to clear this up. I'm not sure about that, but I think that possibly they could be reminded that if they have got statutory duties, they could be reminded that they should fulfil them.
Okay. I mean, it seems to me we do have, there are two choices here, well, maybe three perhaps. One is we just let this kind of string out and let CBC do their own merry thing or whatever. That being one. The second, we give them a much, ask them for a much tougher timetable, timescale, which I'm sure councillor Fage is already doing. But if the town council also rose in behind that, that's adding strength to that. Or thirdly, we just get this sorted ourselves. That is the other option. I'm, obviously there's a cost associated with that. But you know, the fact that Central Beds leader is going around saying fly tipping is a priority, it clearly isn't a priority in Biggleswade. It might be important, but it certainly isn't in Biggleswade. And we can, you know, we have to address that. But I'm conscious we're then creating a precedent and we need to take a, probably a deeper look at some of these things. So I think there are three options. I realise we're a little bit off track, but it is related to the, you know, the question in hand. So Peter, do you want to add anything?
What I was going to say was, obviously you and I have debated this and we can intervene. Obviously it's not our legal responsibility to do so, but it might be in the circumstances a one-off solution that is not repeated, but there is then an expectation on CBC to do what they should be doing. And we have persevered with it before and we have reminded them of what their obligations are, but we haven't had any success.
Okay.
And clearly for some of that, and I took pictures of it today.
No, indeed, yes.
It's certainly getting a lot worse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Councillor Strong.
Just to come back on that, if we did go to the extremes of doing it ourselves, would it not be possible to countercharge Central Beds for their, for them do it, for doing it for them? Because they're, it's their duty to do so. If we did have to do it, I would expect the very least to send a bill to them for the full costs of the clearance, including officers' times in having to resolve it and not waste any councillor's time.
Very good point. Councillor Foster, do you have a comment you wish to make?
I'm fine. I think we've, we've gone into this in quite a bit of detail already. My points might add any further value.
Okay, I think, I'm glad that we're having this because I know it's an issue that's exercised many members of this council and think it's, it's, we need to. Can I offer a suggestion then, a sort of compromise back if colleagues are agreeing, that we let councillor Fage and others pursue this for a little bit longer? And then if we're not in a place by the November council meeting, we, we then do it ourselves? Would that be appropriate or is that being too soft again? I don't know. Councillor Strong.
I agree with the principle of allowing councillor Fage and others to pursue it further. And I think for our clerk to go back with a final demand that they do it, I don't think we ought to prejudge what they, they may or may not do for the November meeting, but perhaps it could be on the agenda for then.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on. Okay. Right, back to the recommendations then. Sorry, matters arising. I think we've done page ten. Page 11. Page 12. Page 13. Page 14. Good. Okay, we're all happy with that. Great, move it. Okay, moving on to item nine then, items for consideration. Martin's Law Report, a members to receive and consider a report from the Community Development Manager. Over to you, Ian.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, we find ourselves in a situation of having to implement the provisions of Martin's Law, officially known as the Terrorism Protection Premises Act 2025. This is the law and it's something we need to adhere to and make ready preparations in order to respond to the potential threat of terrorism, to look at safety and security more deeply than we have done before. And also comply with certain regulations, particularly regarding the numbers, the need to employ SIA, authorised, qualified security stewards and such like. And to review the measures which we are taking to improve public safety in the town in the face of the threat of terrorism. You'll be aware of the fact that many of the major events which take place in the town make us by their very nature a target. So you can imagine that Remembrance Day parades and such like, strong military presence, military representation commemorating the war and the sacrifices that have been made since. That therefore makes that sort of event by its very nature a target. The other big event we have is obviously the Christmas lights switch on. And you'll be aware of the fact that many, many Christmas markets, particularly across Europe, have been targeted in recent years. Consequently, we have to take a view on that and we have to prepare that, we have to raise awareness and take what measures we reasonably can to try to mitigate and reduce the risk of any such attacks. Now, you look at Biggleswade without pushing to overstate the case, we don't want to panic anybody, but we do have a very large, open space and it would be relatively simple to take a run up with a vehicle at the market square in a way that you couldn't do on many market squares. I can think of St Nier's as being another large, open place. But by and large, they're not. We have that particular vulnerability. Access to the A1 also makes us vulnerable for people coming and going very, very quickly after a targeted attack. So for all those reasons, we need to raise awareness, we may need to take precautions, we need to look at the use of street furniture and such like to create barriers, barricades, defensive architecture, to try and make it impossible for anybody to get a vehicle onto the market square. We have to have evacuation routes. We have to raise awareness. We have to have first aid procedures. We have to have evacuation procedures. We have to have rehearsals. We have to consider all these aspects and we have done. And therefore, we put to you the recommendations that you recognise the work we've done to date on Martin's Law in preparation, the support and implementation of mitigation, safety and security measures. The members note the ongoing work with partners to deliver an operational plan, future plans to redesign street furniture in the market square as part of the market square vision with, working with the, the working group. Draw your attention to the appendices, operating model of protocol for Martin's Law for Biggleswade Town Council. Basically, we are going the whole hog. It can be tiered into premises of less than 200 people, standard tier 200 to 799 and enhanced tier 800 plus. Basically, we're going for the 800 plus because pretty much everything we do is in that category. And the lower tier doesn't really make it very much simpler to apply. Can I then also draw your attention to the councillors' responsibilities on page 27? Again, without wishing to create anxiety unnecessarily, there are.
Ian, I don't think we need to go into that level.
I'm not going to read it out.
Please don't. I mean, I think, yeah, I think colleagues will, will have read it. I'm happy for you to give an overview. And then clearly there are, as you rightly point out, there are historic scenarios where some of this may be, it may be the case, but it's, without wishing to sort of alarm colleagues, but equally we need to be, be proportionate. Is there anything else you wanted to sort of add that you needed to draw attention to that, that is specific on this?
Not specific, I think it's all in there, thank you.
Okay, I think Karim wants to come in and I'll come to Peter. Thank you.
Very briefly, so with discussion around regarding the tiers, sub 200 people in any building premises of ours, let alone open spaces. We have done the work in terms of health and safety and in terms of fire, safety and evacuation, which are broadly very closely aligned with counter-terrorism in terms of the plans for those. So that we've done for all of our areas, our buildings. Anything above, as you said, we're, you know, we're recommending additional security, SIA accredited and obviously collaboration with CBC.
Thank you. Peter, did you want to add anything?
I'll make one very quick statement, I guess. So just to add some clarity to what Crims has been saying. So you think about places like the Orchard Centre, for example, when, where they've got children's parties and they've got celebrations taking place, it will be under that kind of parameter in regard to numbers. But nevertheless, as Crim has said, we've already got proper procedures in place regarding to HSE and other related matters. So in part, we're already on the journey. But in truth, if you wanted to take this to its maximum point, just about any capital asset that the council has, potentially if you wanted to look at from a risk perspective, is a potential target. So we can go as far as we can within reason and what is sensible in the circumstances. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Barrett.
Thank you, thank you for the report. And yeah, happy to note the various bits and pieces in here, but I was a little bit confused about, especially with the town centre. Where does CBC's responsibility as the freeholder stop? And where does BTC's responsibility start in these sorts of things? So is our Martin's Law the same as their Martin's Law? Do we know that and those sorts of things? So legally, I'm not quite sure. It explains to me where certain things start and stop.
Karim then, Ian.
Yeah, thanks. So to answer the question, they're broadly the same things in terms of the Martin's Law provisions and coverage and the onus on local authorities or the leading authority to secure as best it can its own freehold area, which is the market square. Where there would be some, and obviously that's what we're trying to do, we're collaborating with CBC and they've acknowledged our, this operating plan in an appendix A. And obviously, we're trying to build on that with them. The building part, furthermore, we have just under two years to kind of achieve this. I mean, you know, we could do as fast as we can, but do it in a methodical way. That could be done in terms of fortifying, if that's required, the, the whole square area as part of the market square vision working group. So not turning it, not, not turning it into Fort Knox, but turning it into a more resilient space with attractive street furniture and all the rest of it. That's a potential. We've, like I say, we've already reached out to CBC in terms of what's happening and when, and we expect to meet with them again soon because they're, they're building this work into their resilience group work as well, business resilience for themselves. They've got a separate group.
And I've got a linked question about CBC. How does the safety advisory group fit in with this work as well? Because I'm not clear from the paper, I may have misunderstood it, but how does that sort of interrelate with this legislation?
Thanks. So essentially this, depending on the size of the event and the location, but let's say in terms of the market square, each and every time we hold, the council hosts an event in that space, it needs to provide all the kind of existing documentation. And if it's above 800 people, it would have to do even more. So it would have to have a proper security plan, which before this security plan would have been incorporated into a current risk assessment. We'd have to have that and a couple of other documents as well on top. That then would go through to the SAG and the SAG would then look at it in a similar way, but with new eyes, if you like, in terms of Martin's Law as well. That's how it works. It's also possible, I think, for us to reach out via CBC to go to SAG and ask and request them to put, have a look at the square anyway and give some kind of input to us or feedback in terms of.
As sort of consultancy, you're making it away. Okay, thank you. Councillor Barrett, do you want to come back and then I'll come back to you?
I guess my brain's probably a couple of steps ahead in terms of, we do have to put up bollards and other things, who's paying for them? Simplify it. So if it's CBC or is it us? We got to that point to understand where the legal obligations are. That's really where I was coming from.
Okay, Peter, I think we've got an answer to that one.
Us.
Ian, sorry, did you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, there's a couple of points on that. I think the first one is that although you can debate who owns the market square, crux of the matter is going to be whose event is this and it's ours. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, comes out of this, there'll be an awful lot more road closures through events this year will be taking the high streets out, there'll be those exclusions and effectively, that's to make it all smoother and to work better, but it does bring more inconvenience.
Okay, thank you. I think I had councillor Albone, did you? No, you didn't. Okay, I think it was councillor Jones next and then councillor Strong.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I have a couple of points, obviously. More questions, if I'm honest with you, that, a bit of clarity. So on the first page of the report, on page 22, I appreciate that the intent behind Martin's Law is to improve national security and preparedness, taking all the reasonable proportionate measures when keeping the public safe. But we've actually written in this report that the sole purpose of it is due to long lasting huge, to prevent huge reputational damage to all parties. I don't like that wording. It feels like the discussion is in the right place in terms of looking after the public and doing the right thing. But what is going to go on record is that we're more worried about our reputation. But that's not what the conversation is representing. So I think I'd appreciate the report perhaps being amended to reflect that. So the written record versus the actual record is accurate. And I am a little bit confused on appendix A in terms of when you ask us to consider the work done today. I think that goes in line with what we were talking before about street furniture and stuff. For me, this isn't specific enough to understand what is it that you're asking us to, to look at. So I feel like it's in here, but I just don't feel very clear as I'm looking through it that I would be saying, yes, we agree to do X, Y and Z. So that would be helpful. And I'm mindful of, when we first joined the council, I recall councillor Russell explaining about an activity to remove street furniture to make it more easily accessible for the public, especially for those with disabilities. And I know that this is a really tricky balance to make for us, but because we're not being specific in this, therefore I'm not clear what I'm saying yes to. So I think that would just be mindful, knowing that all that great work was done with a purpose. Don't want to undermine that by agreeing to something. And then the other two things quickly, just on that last point, that councillor Barrett said, is just to make sure that we're mindful to make a note in the budget for next year because if we know this is coming, then let's plan for it and not get caught unawares. And the last one is the wording of the second bullet point. Again, I'm just not clear what you're asking because surely if this is now going to be a condition to be satisfied across everything that we do, then actually why do we need to recognise this specific bullet point? Because actually wouldn't that then apply to things like invac and ex vac procedures at the Orchard Centre and everything else? So therefore, isn't it just a given? So again, I'm just, I So again, I'm just, I get the principles, I'm fully supportive of everything, but the wording and the way it's laid out doesn't lend me to be really clear about what I'm saying yes or no to today.
Okay, thanks councillor Jones. I mean, just following up on one of your points. It was a decluttering exercise, it was called, just after Covid, I think it was roughly, it's 2020 something. And there were lots of railings and particular points around town. Some people liked it, some people didn't like it. I'm not going to get into that debate now, but it was, some of that was removed. I don't know whether that would be beneficial still in this instance, but it was, it was a way of making it the town centre more accessible.
Because there was obviously an intent there, which worked. And then we just need to make sure that we're also able to satisfy here. It's just getting balanced.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And I'll let the town clerk comment and then take, take.
Councillor Jones is saying, so actually, I guess for councillor Jones's benefit, this wasn't done by us. And we had no input into it. So actually, the decluttering was done by Central Bedfordshire Council. And they made determinations, unfortunately, around what they should or shouldn't remove. And indeed, things like the old bike racks that have been around for a long time. There was a lot of that taken away at the same time. So it was, it was led in that sense.
And the point isn't around whether or not that was right or wrong. It is what it is. It's done. Yeah, I appreciate that. But it's more about what, let's be really, really clear. We know we have to do it. It's a good thing. It can only help serve the public. But let's make sure what's on paper and what's in the charity are real and let's just be specific.
I think on the decluttering stuff, it was actually, I think it was a little bit more complicated than that because CBC did it. But I don't want to get into tangents because there's lots of other questions, but it happened. It's been in the past. Councillor Strong, next please.
I think this is a very good starting point, but if you look at the definitions in the GALT and NOW guidelines, we have got lots of other areas within the town that have many people going to them. There's a football ground, the cricket ground, recreation grounds. This is referring too specifically, in my view, to market square. This has got to be a townwide policy. Yes, the market square has particular issues because that's where the major functions are taking place. But we cannot ignore the other parts of the town and the other parts that are within our control. If we do so, we are negligent as a council, so we must not do that. I think this is a good starting point and what I would like to see is some of the detail that's been spoken about by some of my colleagues here tonight, actually going in a more detailed report to, say, the town management committee, where the detail that is being suggested here, such as the perm structures to provide the protection. We've already heard the decluttering argument, which we won't go into any further, but that is contrary to where we were going. So it needs an issue. And rather than having a lengthy debate tonight, may I recommend that we actually pass this on to recommend the report we made to the town management committee going into full detail and with more concrete proposals, and it may well be concrete by the time we finish with regard to how this is going to be implemented and structures. And also, we need to bear in mind the police involvement with road closures, central beds with road closures and things like that for events. So it's a starting point. It's something that we're obliged to do, but we've got to make sure it works practically. And I'd hate to go on, I'll shut up now. I can see the people getting bored at the time we're taking this. But I think we need to get this progressed, but not necessarily informed council until we've got more detail.
Is that a proposal, councillor Strong?
Happy to propose that.
Okay. Is there a second for that councillor Barrett? Okay. I think there were two people wanting to speak before your prayers. I'll let them speak and then we'll go to a vote. So councillor Thomas, did you want to speak still? And then I've got councillor Foster and then we'll go to the vote. Because it's an important issue. I want to hear people's views.
Yeah, we do. We do normally shut the high street for the Remembrance Sunday. Are we proposing to shut the high street again for more things or is it just that? Is it, is it, is it any more than that?
It'll be shut for the Christmas lights, which on. Yes.
That'll be the first time we've done that.
It will be the first time we've done that and it'll be from south, South East Street up to the road traffic lights.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Councillor Foster and then we'll get to the vote.
Thank you for the report. Welcome and welcome the report. And I agree with entirely with councillor Jones's points around some of the, some of the wordings in the report and some of the content. We absolutely have to do these things. What I'd like to see with, with the, both the report and the operating model in particular, we've got some quite, some quite conversational language in the report here. So things like that's us, no point in us considering. Type of language for me isn't a, an operating model. It's a conversation. I think I'd like to see some, some more specific detail in there around what we're going to do. So again, members are able to make some informed decisions. When things are brought to council, they should be brought for us for considerations and not a done deal. And I think that's really something that I'm quite passionate about. We, we welcome the feedback and the the report, but make sure that it comes to us in a way that we're considering rather than it's a done deal. And I think there's some other things I could sort of mention around formatting and et cetera. But it's minor things in relation to that. But my key points around, this is about safety and about what we're going to do rather than, being a bit woolly, to be honest.
Thank you. I'll give the very last word to councillor Albarn and then we'll go to the vote.
So we go to the vote.
Yeah.
Can we just hear what the recommendation is again? Because I'm not completely clear. I'm worried.
Okay, okay. Councillor Strong, can you? I didn't have a chance to write it down while I was doing it.
Fortunately, I can't listen to the recording of the meeting.
No, indeed.
Determine what I said, but it was to the effect that we note and appreciate the report, but that we recommend that it goes to town management committee for the more detail to deal with the specifics, including covering the other areas in the town that are subject to Martin's Law with a view to them going into the detail to report back to the town council with a recommendation as to the way forward, noting councillor Foster's point about it not being a done deal. But I think there's a lot more discussion, which I think would be better dealt with outside the form of tonight's meeting and indeed outside the form of a full council meeting. That is what committees are for.
Okay. Are you happy with that councillor Albarn? Great. Okay. All those in favour? Great. That's unanimous. Yes, brilliant. Thank you very much. Okay, 9B, financial regulations review. Ernest, hope you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So the financial regulations governing the, governing the conduct of the financial transactions of the town council. And the financial regulations can only be amended or varied by resolution of the council. So the council's financial regulations were last updated on 13th of August 2024. And members were in support of the recommendation to properly replicate the exact guidance of NAC templates from 2025. So since this time, NAC has published a new template of model financial regulations for the, for councils in March 2025. Members agreed the process of reviewing the financial regulation during the finance and general purpose committee meeting on 1st of July 2025. And officers have followed all the process agreed by, by the committee. So officers have reviewed the council's financial regulations based on the new NAC's template, which, which is a March 2025 version incorporating key aspects from current Bigglesway Town Council's financial regulation, recognising local ways of working. So by using the new NAC's template model, this will satisfy both internal and external auditors' expectation of the council. So the draft amended version was shared with broader members on SharePoint and paper copies were was printed, were printed for members who requested for critique and comments. All the comments from, from an observation from members have been incorporated in the new suggested financial regulations. And at this stage, I'll say thank you to members who, who contributed in, who submitted attrition to officers. So during the finance and general purpose committee meeting on 16 of September 2025, members resolved that the co-produced document be adopted by the town council today. So the recommendation is for members to consider and please approve the new co-produced document, which is appendix A, in order to enable officers to publish, publish it on, on the council's website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr Ball. Any comments, questions on this one? No, councillor Strong?
As a chairman of finance committee, I ought to lead this. As Mr Ball has said, this is designed to bring our financial regulations in parallel with the national conditions, which I think will make more sense in future reviews. Quite a lot of time has been spent by officers and some members in actually bringing this document together. The only thing that I would have preferred in many respects is an actual clean print of the regulations for the adoption. But I'm satisfied that at least for this first year, it's better to have these revised regulations in place. There may be other issues that when we consider it in a year's time that may need tweaking, such as financial limits, et cetera. But I think what we have got here is something that ties in with the, the model of NAC. And if future changes come about in recommended procedures, it would be a lot easier, I think, to amend without trying to work out what is totally new, what is there, what and where everything should be. So in that respect, I propose that we accept these regulations as laid out, subject to the clean, clean issue, set of regulations being produced because we have only got a track version here, which is good because you can see the changes, but you can't actually see the clean print where all the changes have been made. But I think that we can do that. It will be reviewed in a year's time, in any event, I think. So it does, it does the job certainly for the, the time being. And I think it's an improvement on our current regulations.
Okay, that's great. We've got a second for that. I'm assuming you're proposing that. Great. Got a second. Great. Okay. So all those in favour of the recommendation are set out in the paper? All those against abstentions?
I'm going to sign on that, sorry.
Okay. There we go. Okay, yeah, 9, 9C, applications to vary rights at Bigglesway Common. Is there anything you want to say?
Move we notice.
Just note it. Okay, move on. Okay. D, premises licence application friends of Stratton School PTA. I mean, it doesn't actually say, but I'm guessing this is because the, the school want to host more events and functions and things like that. My assumption. Councillor Albarn?
I'm not sure exactly how, yeah, what, what, what we can do if we're actually being consulted on this. But, but I would move that we don't object in any way to this.
Councillor Strong?
I would second that, but I think we should point out that this will be subject to Martin's Law as well, quite clearly in terms of the premises. So one would hope that the licensing authority will take that on board.
I sincerely hope they will, councillor Strong. So, okay. Yep. So we just note it and no objection. Yep. Okay. No objection. Right. E, CBC consultation, defining the high street areas for high street rental auctions, HSRAs. This is a new acronym on me when I read the papers. So it's considering information from Central Bedfordshire Council about defining areas where high street rental auction powers may be applied. And this is to address long-term vacant properties in particular high street areas. It's a consultation. We obviously have a few empty properties in and around our high, high street and town centre. How do we want to take this? Because it's, we probably don't want to discuss the consultation necessarily here, but if anybody's got any thoughts, how we take it forward? I have, but I'm waiting for the colleagues. But go on councillor Foster.
So at this stage, are we, I guess there's a decision really. Are we looking for a direction from the council? Or are we, is this, are you looking for some, some comments that can go back this evening? Or are we looking to something else? If, if the approach is that we need to sort of give steer on the, the roads, then happy to do that. I think from a starting point, clearly the high street, clearly Hitching Street. And I think there's, there's an element of Shortmead Street, which should be considered. And I guess an element probably of, of Station Road up to the junction with Backstreet. And beyond that, and I think we probably need to define the, the high street in relation to where, where the high street stops. And that probably the cutoff for that is probably the bulk or maybe at a, at a push, the, yeah, it's essentially that element. So that's, that's our, our high street. And I'm welcome the fact that they're bringing this forward so that there are, that's an opportunity for turning some of these properties, empty properties into usable buildings.
Yeah, no, thank you councillor Foster. Councillor Strong?
Noting the points about the area, there is a map with this consultation which shows the area. Interestingly, a number, there are also a number of roads specifically mentioned and roads that are in, within the area which covers largely Church Street, High Street up to including Stratton House and the library. And indeed, a non-procurety interest because my office where I work is included in it. It then goes down back, effectively down Backstreet, down Station Road, round Safran Road. It's got a peculiar little bit where it goes, I think it includes some residential properties in Hitching Street. And it includes, and it goes back up, down, across to Mill Lane. Although Mill Lane is again left out of the main streets up to the high street and in, into Shortmead Street up until roughly the Tarp's place. And it's roughly that area. Whether all of it is actually appropriate, I'm not sure.
That does seem rather large to me.
That's the extent of the area. So in view of councillor Foster's comments where he was thinking the town centre is, it goes beyond the pure town centre in that, but would he, because it, but it includes Hitching Street, which is one of the areas that sometimes causes concern. It includes Safran Road, et cetera. So whether that's entirely appropriate, but I think it would be helpful if we're going to discuss it again. And again, this may be a town management committee meeting that would be appropriate for it. If they actually at least have the map element of it and what's there. The legal side about the auctioning of empty premises for rental purposes only. I'm not sure exactly how that will work, but, but I think we need to be satisfied that the area involved is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Barrett and then councillor Foster.
Yeah, my concerns or, or points coming back, if you like, as part of a consultation with more to do with how it will actually work, because at the moment, various businesses and so on, for want of a better phrase, are allowed to actually have their businesses in certain parts of the town, depending on the best place for them and so on. But an auction sort of suggests that the highest bidder will get the opportunity to put whatever they want in that particular building. So if we're being consulting on this part, i.e. do we think it's a good idea? I think I'd like to see a stipulation in here that we would be consulted on every single one of the places before it actually gets formally let, even though that person may have won an auction, if that's.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Foster?
I wanted to duplicate. I think probably my, my point really isn't directly related to this, but it's just a general point around the documentation. Now, clearly I haven't read in detail and clicked the link that came in the hard copy of the paperwork. Because there's no link in the hard copy of the paperwork. And I'm thinking from the point of view of a resident, what does the resident see? So the resident, if they're looking, are they looking on the website? And that's fine. But I think if we're to give members a hard copy without the documentation, I appreciate in some cases, that's not always practical. But a map certainly should have been. And I think in general, where there's an opportunity for us to have documentation available rather than click the link, I think that's where we should be, should be going.
Councillor Strong?
For once, I actually did click the link, which is a great, a great rarity. But I think as far as the auction goes, they're looking at it for rentals. So it's what times, types of condition are going to be put in the auction conditions. Because if you're selling a freehold, you can put a covenant in there that you want done. So I think it's a, I think it's a lot more complicated than possibly is actually made out in that. So might I move that it's actually referred to the management committee to report back to town management committee to report back to full council after due consideration.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm, I'm, I know this is a bit unorthodox. Okay, that sounds good. Um, um, I know this is a bit unorthodox. I'm conscious we have councillor Fage is in the room, even though he's a visitor. However, I'm wondering if he may be able to add anything to this from a central bed perspective. So if I can suspend regulations, is that right? For a moment while I let councillor Fage speak for a minute.
Sorry, I don't want to make this, I really don't want to make this a habit. Firstly, this is, this is like one of the most pointless consultations Central Bed has ever done because it knows where the town centre is. It defined it in its own local plan. So, and, and the town council has a position on this as well, because you remember our neighbourhood plan with the, we don't support residential development at ground floor level in these locations. So be careful not to wander into some silly little trap here. Um, I think councillor Strong's proposal to defer this to town centre management committee is very sensible. And make sure councillor Russell's there because she will be loading both barrels, no doubt.
Thank you, councillor Fage. I'll now un-suspend the regulations, I think. Okay, and, um, we need a second for councillor Strong's proposal as well. I think, yeah, councillor Thomas or councillor Jones, great. Um, okay, do you, do you want to, uh, well, I think, do we all know what the councillor Strong's proposal is? Do we need to repeat it again or following it? Okay. Great. So all those in favour of councillor's proposal. There we go. I think that's unanimous. I think I can't see everybody. Yes, good. Thank you very much for that. And thank you councillor Fage for your, uh, um, comments. Um. Nine F, CBC weight strategy. I won't be asking councillor Fage to comment on this one, but I'll be, uh, I'm sure we can work it out, but um, it's rather ironic considering the, uh, issue we've just debated at length earlier, so. Um. Does anybody want, any of what type we can approach this? Yeah. The problem is the consultation actually ends today, so there is a bit of a problem. Um. So I think if we're going to even, yeah, respond, we haven't really got, as councillor Foster, we've only got four hours to, uh, put anything forward. Um. Good.
I think as a strategy, I don't think there's any issues regards that as strategy. But without really understanding the implementation strategy.
Yeah.
I don't think we can comment as the intent and the principles make perfect sense, but we can't comment any further.
No, I think you're probably right, councillor Barrett. And I think the problem is we know the implementation's not very good, as has been evidenced in our town. Um, councillor Albon.
Yeah, this is mostly, I, I believe, driven by government policy, which central beds have to implement. So, um, I, I don't think there's any point in us, this town council responding to.
Okay, okay. I, I mean, just as an aside, I mean, clearly the deadline is today. And I think if just officers can be aware of deadlines in future, and I re, I don't know when this came in, but just so we have at least 24 hours to consider things, because obviously being published on the, the, sorry, the deadline being on the day of the council's not overly helpful if it was something that were, were particularly critical. But otherwise, um, I think the members' points are made. Okay. Okay, number 10, planning applications, 10A, Popple Road. Subject to neighbours?
No objection.
Subject to neighbours, okay, great. 10B, flat. 130, it doesn't say which flat it is, but it's on 130 Shortmead Street.
Subject to neighbours.
Yeah, okay, subject to neighbours. Uh, 10C. Uh, 13 Home Court Avenue. Uh, councillor Barrett and then.
Just quickly, it, it does seem excessive. It's a huge extension on the, compared to the size of the property. Uh, but I have written subject to neighbours and no objection, but I think we should just at least comment back and say the officer who's looking after this should actually just have a quick look again at the actual size of the extension that's been done on this property.
Okay, thank you. So we're all happy with that, sort of subject to neighbours, but with the, the caveat that councillor Barrett's suggested, yeah, no problems with that. Okay, great. Councillor Albon, did you have anything to add on that? Or was it the same comment? Okay. Great. Um, uh, 10D, uh, land to the south of Stratton Business Park. New Spring Cottage is London Road, Biggleswade. I think this is one of the Tritax symmetry signs, if I'm, if I'm correctly, so. Uh, any comments on that? Uh, councillor Albon.
Yeah, I mean, these, these are, these signs are right on the A1, so I'm not particularly keen on, on that. But, um, I note that councillor Fage has commented on this and suggesting that these, uh, at least be time limited. And, and we, we, we still see stuff around the town left by developers.
Hmm.
And not removed when they, they should have been removed. So that, I, I particularly agree with that point. But, um. I'm not sure about the A1, um, and how, can I say, there are, there are other, um, other signs that appear down there as well. I don't think we saw any planning, um, consultation for, for those. And I think that, that, the one I'm thinking of, I think is in our parish, further, further south on, on the A1.
Right.
But, yeah, they're my comments.
Okay.
Not keen on it, but at least it should be, um, timely.
Okay, councillor Strong.
Um, taking on councillor Albon's point, perhaps we say we have no objection to it, providing it is for no more than two years. And then if they want it for a longer period, they can always extend it.
Okay, that sounds good. We're all happy with that. That seems a good approach. So there's, um, no objection, but with it, you know, can emphasise a sort of time limited of two years, uh, please. Okay, uh, 10E, eight binder place. Change of use to a hairdressing salon.
And there are a number of comments on this particular application from regards parking that, um, I think the person who's suggesting it, um, or wants it to happen is suggesting that people, other people go to work during the day. And therefore there would be enough parking for people to come along. I think they want to change it to a hair salon.
Yeah.
Um, but the, I'm not sure the name of the, the officer who's looking at this, the parking survey person or something is suggesting that, that the applicant should go back and pay for a survey to be done regards parking before, um, it would be granted. And I think we should support that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Albon.
Yeah, the issue was in, in the comments, um, the issue of precedent, I think, came up as, as well, because, um, if, if this, if this allowed, it's allowed and takes up on-street parking, then other garages in the area could, you know, they, they wouldn't be able to convert to, um, a hairdressers or whatever they want to convert to because the parking's already used. So, so there is a kind of precedent issue too.
Yeah, okay, sounds sensible. Councillor Strong.
Just on the precedent issue, this is a residential area. Is that, once we start letting some businesses open in there, it's starting taking away and being detrimental to a residential area. So it's creating a precedent for that elsewhere in the town where you could end up with having residential estates with lots of little businesses running out of them. And indeed, on lots of developments in the past, there always used to be a covenant against actually running a business from the house. And I think this, it could be the thin end of the wedge if we're not careful.
Hmm. No, thank you. Okay.
I think we need to be careful not to discourage people working from home and running businesses from home. I think in, in this particular case, it's more to do with aspects of parking. I don't think there's any issue this person having a business from home. It's just, it needs to be done in the correct way.
Yes, because presumably if they, people wanted to go on foot, it's not going to cause a problem, is it? It's, it's the parking issue. Okay, so no objection, but taking into account the parking officer's comments, councillor Barrett, is that, is that how you describe it?
We should, um, support the parking officer's comments regarding the, and the precedent aspects. I think that's what we should be doing. So no objection, yes, but.
Okay, but support the parking officer's comments. Okay, great, brilliant, thank you. Uh, F, 10F, 46 binder place. No, subject to neighbours, okay. Uh, G, 30 Jupiter Way. Okay, subject to neighbours. Uh, H, uh, 162 London Road, Biggleswade. Trying to remember what this one was actually, single rear extension, rear doors, okay. Seems alterations have been made on the planning application already, but.
I, I think it was originally a, a, a bungalow. It's been extended, uh, significantly, I think. So it's, again, it's sort of al- almost on the edge of sort of being over development. But again, I would say no, no objection from our part. I think the officers in CBC should be able to, um, work out whether it's right or wrong.
Okay, thank you. So no objections, that one. Uh, I, um, and it's, it's the, the um, I think the, uh, the battery sort of farm or one of the battery farms on, uh, Dunton Lane. Uh, councillor Albon.
Yeah, I think we, um, we raised objections to this based on archaeology and, um, landscape. Um, the reports that, the reports, um, from officers, uh, suggesting conditions that I think would satisfy our, our objection. So as long as those conditions are, are taken up, I, I, I think we should support the application.
Okay. We all agree with that. Okay. Right, thank you. Moving on. Uh, number 11, planning application outcomes. They're on the form, uh, for you to have a look at. Is anything they wanted to draw attention to or not? No. Okay. All right, number 12, accounts, uh, financial administration position accounts, August 2025. Um, I'll let Ernest say a few words and then we can, um, take that forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the usual, uh, four reports are on, on the council's website, which, which includes the balance sheet, the income and expenditure and, and the payment list. And so the payment list normally includes the there are debits for, for the man, the standing orders and, and the box payments. So the projected out in after five months suggests a deficit just over 14,000 at the end of the financial year. The deficit will be zeroed by the General Reserve if it is not covered by an underspend within the existing agreed budget at the year end. But of, officers are doing all that we can to reduce this, um, deficit. Um, some of the activities, including following the financial regulations by, um, making sure that of, of officers look, seek three calls for every expenditure. And also there are quite a lot of negotiation going on with our customers and all, all these activities will reduce the deficit, uh, maybe closer to, yeah, and I think the recommendation is for members to consider and approve the August financial management report. Uh, thank you.
Um, my observation is councillor Fage made observations about this, but I think the consultation or objection period ended on the 10th of October, if I've read it correctly. Earlier, and we're after the 10th of October now. So again, the comment made earlier in the meeting about having consciousness of dates needed to be there because the order has been made. Um, and I did see, I thought it was this one.
It was 16.
Oh, I may, I may. Councillor Jones, you, you said it's a different date.
I might have misread it, but I've written it down that the 16th, which still gives us 40 hours, but I may be wrong, so I'll defer to somebody else just to sense.
Have you got a reference for that?
Uh, I'm trying to.
Um, on page 70, if I've, if I've read it correctly.
Sorry, look.
Um.
Just checking on version control. Okay.
Put ultimate paragraph on page 70.
Yeah, not later than 10th of October. Okay.
So.
All right, in, in that case, then that's.
Can I add a comment then on that, please?
Yes, please. Yeah.
Then that is disappointing.
Yeah.
Because I feel that the, I, I agree with councillor Fage completely in his comments earlier. And I'm actually quite disappointed that councillor Russell's in here because I would really rather defer to her exact terminology that would be required in a situation like this. So if you're watching it back, councillor Russell, we do appreciate all that. Um. But I feel that some of the documentation is conflicting. Um, so whereas actually we're removing a footpath but putting in a bridleway in the same place. So that's not the end of the world. That's fine. The, the access is still there.
Yeah.
It is the bridleway 11. I think if you read the language on page 74, in the interest of the owner of the land crossed by the bridleway, it's expedient that it should be diverted. Well, bearing in mind what's happening with that piece of land, that's you know, I don't know why any other comments are really required. And then, um, where it says on page 77 that the authority, the footpath is not, is not needed for public use. Well, that sort of negates the point of putting in a bridleway then, because surely that says that it is needed. So I'm very confused by that. But it also it's just, it now means that when you cross over that bridge, you no longer have access to go easily to where you need to go. So, so not only now are we asking Biggleswade residents to now go even further out their way to cross the bridge, which I agree is a very important safety measure, but it is taking people extra kilometre or so out their way. Which means you have less people going out there, whereas before the people would use it as a point of access to move around the town when we think about sustainable travel. Now we're asking them to move, to work, to walk even further out their way. When we're asking them to enjoy the green spaces of our town, which we are minimising access to by removing that bridleway. So again, it's disappointing that we've missed a date.
Yeah.
And I appreciate sometimes these things are outside of our control. I don't know when we received this and how long we had. I'll defer to internal conversations to determine that. But there is something I still think it's worth sending something in urgently tomorrow morning, please, because I know it says, oh, within seven days of the actual, if it's the 10th, we're still within those seven days.
Okay.
So I'd appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Jones. Any other comments on that?
Just that I'm not clear what we would have suggested differently.
Yeah, no, yeah. Okay.
Why the sleepwear, councillor?
Okay, yeah.
But it sets a precedent, doesn't it, in terms of saying that actually we're minimising access to the green spaces in our town?
I, I think councillor, I think a broader commentary around, around that is, is a valid sort of comment. Um, can I make a suggestion then? And if, whether through, through you, Peter or, or Asia? Um, if we can send an email, not tonight, but first thing in the morning to the, uh, the, you know, the sort of, uh, planning team here or whatever, just with a sort of, try and capture some of those comments, because we haven't got time to do anything else now. Um, just sort of relaying our disappointment and, uh, yeah, um, in, in a way that try and capture what councillor Jones has said in, in a, in a paragraph and the flavour of the meeting. Okay? Uh, but if we can make sure that we get sort of a decent length of consultation dates in paperwork, because this is obviously there's been two things this evening that we've missed and it's not, it's, uh, it's not help. Okay, all right. Councillor Foster.
Um. Well, I'm not clear what, what's been written then. Are we saying we don't, we object to the bridleway being closed up? Because we haven't taken a vote on it. So I, I've not seen a collective view whether that's the case or not. So, 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 I, I, um, you know, there might be some people are quite happy with the change and there might be some people that aren't. I think we need to have a council view rather than
Okay.
I, and it, so that's, that's the first thing. And I think, uh, we've dealt with the, the element of timing. So, uh, so I'd like.
You're quite right, councillor Foster. I was just checking, um, primarily around the process issue, but you're right to pick up a point in terms of the, um, directive. So I'm happy for councillor Jones to put forward a motion on that. And if there's a second.
Yeah, absolutely right. So, um, to send a note email over, for, um, over to CBC to say that we appreciate that the deadline has been missed. However, the, the view of um, councillors that this is a shame that this is being stocked up because it minimizes, um, easier access to our open spaces. And if there is the possibility to entertain a conversation, keep it open, that'd be appreciated.
Okay, is there a second for that? Okay, councillor Thomas is secondary. And then councillor Albon comment, and then we'll have a vote.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we could either object to the bridleway being stopped completely, or I'm not sure it's necessary that should be a bridleway. Footpath, yes. Um, but, um, bridleway, I can see the case for, for it not being a bridleway.
I'd be happy to amend it.
Okay, do you want to, do you want to amend it?
To amend it to the potential solution for a footpath. Instead, if that's more amenable to the landowner as well and to councils.
Okay.
It's the access point, I suppose, that's most important.
Okay. Councillor Foster, you're a bit clearer about.
I, I, I'd like to be a little bit more robust.
Okay.
In that, that we are, uh, rather than we sort of a bit concerned about it, uh, if, if, if the proposal is that we object to this being closed up as a, as a bridleway. Uh, and, and the, and the council supports, uh, that this being retained as a footpath. Then that for me is the proposal.
Okay.
And then we can decide whether or not that's the view of council. So the proposal is we, we support the, the closing up of the bridleway, but that, that is retained as a footpath. And then we'll see where we get to.
Councillor Jones, are you happy with that change?
Absolutely. And this is why I'm as councillor Russell, so thank you for stepping in.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're all clear. So and, um, councillor Thomas, you happy to second that?
Yes.
Change. Okay. Right, all those in favour of the, uh, motion as just described by councillor Foster? Okay, I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much. We can move on and we can, um, get. Okay, I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much. We can move on and we can, um, get that communicated to Central Beds in the morning. Thank you all for that. Uh, where are we now? We've done the number 13, 13B, I think councillor Fage, um, said all there is to say about that at the moment. We'll, we'll discuss it at the next meeting, assuming the consultation is still live, but we'll keep, uh, we'll keep an eye on that one. Um, okay, number 14 then, public open session. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak in person in the room? And then if there's anyone online, councillor Fage.
Thank you. Um, something I didn't mention in my opening remarks, uh, chairman, was, and genuinely, because I had just seen this consultation on the bridleway. Um, a moment ago when I walked into the chamber, is that this, this piece of land, um, the landowner is trying to get it allocated in the local plan. Right, with the call for sites. Now, I'm, I'm looking at this and the above order was made on the 29th of August. Right, so if the town council did not receive this on the 29th of August, need to say that very clearly, because that, that brings into question whether or not the consultation is valid. So if it didn't come on the 29th of August, we need to know that. If it did, why did it not come to the September town council meeting? Because you've, you've missed the deadline and you're playing catch up now, unfortunately. And you know, this is serious because that bridleway could be the difference between that, that site getting allocated and not. So, um, I, I hope we can really reflect on the root cause of that. I think we've got the right proposal. But, um, yeah, there's, there's some serious digging that we need to do there, particularly if Central Beds is at fault, please. The only other thing on Martin's Law, if the joint committee might be the right place to, and, and I'm not saying it is, but if, if TCM feels the joint committee or the chairman of TCM perhaps feels that the chairman of the joint committee or, or the joint committee itself, sorry, should consider, um, consider that. I think that could be appropriate because we can summon senior Central Beds officers to, to try to hear from them what they see as, um, uh, the things that are required in terms of Martin's Law. Because there, there is a balance. My understanding is it doesn't need to be impossible. We just need to show that we've taken consideration and, and have serious measures in place. So, um, particularly seeing as CBC own the market square and that's where the risk is, that's something to consider. I'm not insisting on it by any means, so happy to discuss that with councillor Patel perhaps.
Okay, thank you. Um, on the, on the bridleway, I shall let officers investigate the sort of timings and, and the administration of that. And we, we can, we can look into that. On the Martin's Law point, I will, um, that's a very good point. I'll look into that with the chairman and deputy chairman of TCM in due course and, and, and see whether, how that interrelates with BJC. Um, and how useful or, or otherwise that might be. So councillor Strong.
Just on the point about the notice on the bridleway, the public notice according to our agenda and the papers in there says 5th of September, referring back to the 29th of August. So, um, in any way, it's unsatisfactory in any event, but I think that was probably when the notice was act, would actually been sent out. So although it's passed on the 29th of August, it wasn't sent out to the 5th of September. So I think that may be part of the answer to the question, but it's still not satisfactory that we've had to consider it after the event.
Okay, thank you. I think we've got the message now. I think that's, uh, that's good. Okay, that's the, um, we finished the public open session now. I'd like to move into exempt. Um, we're all in favour of moving to exempt? Yep, okay, good. Thank you.